Okay, let's get started. First to call over to the decision board, we're being formed, go call.
Jay here.
Jandek Creek here.
Jervin here.
Baylan here.
Biscachal here.
We have four, please stay on the floor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay.
Yep, you ready?
You ready?
So, before we do the swearing in of our new board member, I would like to congratulate Jay for winning reelection to our school board last week. At the end of the next three-year term, Jay would have served or will have served 21 years on the Ashwadman School Board. So, thank you, Jay, for your service. Congratulations.
Hey, my oath. I, Jay Ben Lennon, having been elected to the office of Ashwadman School Board, swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, and will faithfully and impartially discharge duties of said office to the best of my ability, while we got.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Did he try it?
Yeah, he did.
He didn't memorize it?
Yeah.
Okay, can we get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Well, favor. Motion carries. Okay, election of officers and board appointments, I want to turn the order to Kurt.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to entertain nominations for officers for the upcoming school year for the Ashwadman School Board. So, we start off every year with president. Are there any nominations for the office of president?
I nominate Jay Ben Lennon.
We have a nomination and a second. Are there any other nominations?
Sure.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, at this time, we'll vote on the nomination of Jay Ben Lennon for the office of president. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Okay, let's move on to the vice president. Are there any nominations for the vice president?
I nominate Brian Jandek Creek, second.
A motion in the second for nomination to Brian Jandek Creek as vice president. Any other nominations? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Nominations for the clerk.
I'll nominate Jenny Biscachal.
Second.
And a motion in the second for the clerk for Jenny Biscachal. Any other nominations? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And since we only have four of us, at present time, the next person that would be nominated, or when we appoint somebody, that person would be at large.
Yeah.
So, I would like a nomination officially for treasurer.
I'm Rachel Bearden.
I'll second.
And then, give me one way up through. Nominations from? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, let's move on to board appointments. We'll start with the high school graduation.
I would like to come here.
And I also would like to be our assistant superintendent. If you'd be close too, if that's okay. Okay, and then, how are these, the other, these matchups gonna work?
It's simply just gonna be an opportunity, you know, as the parents go by, principals will be handing things into the cars, into the, for those students. An opportunity for board members, I plan on being there, board members and myself waving to their parents, wishing our fifth grade graduation kids.
They did say that if you did want to participate, you could also, you know, they give you a role, they give you a role to participate, whether it was handing out stuff or...
You guys have any thoughts on that?
I can certainly do the Parkview one. So Tuesday, eight, yes, in person.
Which one, Brian?
Tuesday, six, eight, at Parkview.
Okay.
I could do, I think I can do Valley View. I think I'm gonna be there that day anyway.
I'll say I can do Valley View too.
I think we might be there for your son, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'm hoping doing something like right before that at Valley View kind of, so if you're there too, then... I mean, if I were to hold three and a half hours or whatever.
We could split shifts.
Split. That's what I'm kinda thinking, like I'm just wondering, 'cause I go take through M.
With my son, alright, see ya.
And you have a pioneer?
I can do pioneer.
You need pioneer? Okay, we don't know yet about Wozniak Convention. I'm assuming that it's gonna be live again.
Sure.
Cross our fingers.
I'm planning to attend Ashwadman.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, then both of you guys? Michelle, you wanna go do it?
Unless you wanna go.
No, I'm fine.
We can take all of you if you wanna go. Yeah, a lot of districts take the whole board and they do this professional... Do I go on that?
No.
No, I'm fine.
Okay, then our season meeting?
The season meeting is on the same night as our board meeting, but we still have to designate somebody.
I'd love to sign up for it, since I own everyone. Why is it a case of... You get a free meal that you don't need.
Yeah.
Chicken dinner?
Okay, let's move on then to H, establishing a board meeting in times. The annual board meeting will be held July fourteenth, six o'clock here at the district office. And that would be followed by the budget, no wait, some budget first and then...
Budget carrying first, then the...
Yes. Okay. Our monthly meetings will be the second Wednesday of the month, with the exception of our June meeting will be Wednesday, the sixteenth, would be the third Wednesday.
We do that because of the fifth grade graduations that my new does.
And then, the October meeting would be Wednesday, October twenty-seventh, would be the fourth Wednesday. And that's because of the lab certification.
Yeah, we look at the information from the state trying to do a lab certification for them.
And then hopefully, the Ashwadman is gonna be happening again, and we will do the March twentieth, twenty-two. Meeting, the Wednesday, the sixteenth, which we do through the last day.
So, just to clarify, then, Wednesday, the July fourteenth, we're gonna have the July board meeting after the end of the...
Yeah.
Yes, as always.
Yep, I just wanted to be sure.
Okay, let's move on. Citizens' demonstration, is Jenny back here? Like to speak to something that's not on the agenda? Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda. Be looking for approval for our minutes of the regularly scheduled meeting held Wednesday, March seventeenth. Minutes of the exec session held Wednesday, March seventeenth. Minutes of the board canvass meeting held Thursday, April eighth. Schedule of checks written, March ninth through April seventh. Schedule of checks written, March ninth through April seventh. Staff inhering resignations, there are eleven code curriculars to be presented for approval, and the board financial reports for February.
I'd love to approve the consent agenda as of that presented.
Okay, motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, let's move on to superintendent's report.
Thank you, Jay. So, if you haven't had the opportunity to drive by both Pioneer Elementary and Cormier, construction is well on its way. Seats of walls going up this week, so if you've had time to drive by, please do so. And according to the meeting that was yesterday, it sounds like we are on schedule.
Yep.
And it sounds like everything is going well, so kudos to our Tom and Keith and our building principals, and construction crew, so well on their...
We're hopeful that it will be done by the end of July.
Wow.
Wow.
If things stay on schedule, that's definitely a possibility, that would be awesome, 'cause I think those teachers at Cormier and those two-edged classrooms, time to get them, it'll get settled. So, it's going really well.
Our high school, we've had a very successful alternative season. You know, and I've said many times, but a real credit to Nick Singer, our athletic director, and just doing an amazing job of organizing and imagine having all these sports seasons in, you know, basically the winter sports season, right into an alternative season, and then right into our spring season. Some of them are overlapping, and so a real credit to him, our coaches and our athletes for doing tremendous work. Some things to highlight, our high school girls' swimming team has had a phenomenal year. They ended, anytime you end the season at the state swimming meet, you know that you've done things well. They were seventh place of thirty-one teams. And, you know, and that was division one and division two together, so it's a real credit to our girls. Freshman, Shannon Nicky, was third in the state at the two-hundred free, and fourth in the four-hundred free as a freshman. Senior, Hallery Dominic, was second in the five-hundred free, with five minutes. Can't believe you can swim five-hundred free in less than five minutes. And she was third in the hundred butterfly. We had two relay teams of Nicky, Dominic, Emily Selison, and Sydney Pop play spilt. And the other relay team of Nicky, Dominic, Pop, and Liz With, finished seventh. They set eight new team records, era pool records this school year, so just a phenomenal effort. Very young team, exciting to have those girls back, could be an exciting fall for us next fall in real swimming. Our high school girls' tennis team has also had a tremendous season. Last week, they beat Chaboyden North six to one, down the regular season with an impressive eight-no conference record. Just completed subsectionals and team finished first, and they are on to sectionals on Thursday. Leading the way for the Jaguars is Natasha Shi, number one at, number one singles. Pooja Patel, number two singles. Anisha, I have this name a couple times, so I gotta make sure I get it right. Anisha Prastugupha, I, ooh, got it, at number threes, and Jordan Dominic at fours. Doubles team of Delaney Christensen and Courtney Becki at number one doubles. Karen Conrad and Megan Bongo at two, and Lucy and Emily Colet, number three doubles, all advanced to Thursday's sectional. So, congratulations to them. So, fantastic season for our girls. Nick had the balance between clean indoor, outdoor, and all of the above, so kudos to them. Some other alternative sport seasons, real quick, golf, girls' golf, had three meets already. You know, it's one of the concerns we have, what is our weather gonna be like in the alternative season? Really fortunate, feel fortunate and blessed to have our girls' golf team competing well, doing really well. Three meets in, football has three games in. Football is in a very top, 'cause we combined with us and the Fox Valley Association, and so we ended up in a bracket that had some pretty significant teams, so... Continued to do well. We socked the team as four games in. And next week, Tuesday, our cross-country team will compete at the conference. So, kind of some numbers that are kind of interesting. Student athletes in the fall, we had two-hundred and ninety-four students that participated in the alternative season. That's about a little bit over thirty percent of our student body, so that's awesome, really good participation level. And our spring sports seasons have started as well, and like I said before, there's a little bit of overlap between those seasons. Our DECA team finished second overall at the DECA state competition. Our team had ten students compete, and again, this was virtually, welcomed over a hundred schools and more than a thousand students. All ten Ashwadman competitors did well, but one of our teams finished in the top. Two students, they will move on to international competition. That is the team of Naveen Balu and Laxin Lea, so congratulations to them. Their team was financial services and international qualifier, so very exciting day for both of them. Also, Anisha Prastugupha, also won a medal for marketing test. And several other students competed but did not qualify. They were Leah Ashworth, Jayon Balu, Haley Dumaln, Madeline Hamlek, Paige Colasso, Victoria Shamber, and Arya Shankar. So, congratulations to our DECA. The Jaguar Excellence for the month of March, had a pleasure, loved having them out in person, so I finally got to do that again. We had sixty-eight Jaguar Excellence. This brings our total to nine-hundred-and-fifty-nine. We only need a hundred-and-fifty-five to break our mark, so challenge our staff to get that done in the month of April and shatter it in the month of May, so please keep up the great work. We talked about it last month, but again, we have a board vacancy, as all of you know, Paul's recommendation. He's elected to a three-year term, which expires in April, so we are going to be filling that position for state statute. You guys have sixty days. We posted the position on last week Friday. And as of today, we have two applications for that position. And the plan is for all of you to interview the person prior to the May board meeting. So, what I need to ask you, all of you to discuss right now, let's say, for example, in the next week, we end up getting five more applications. Do you guys want to filter those out and interview three? Do you want to interview all five, six, or seven? Do you wanna have a special meeting, or do you just wanna do it right prior to the May board? So, just, if we have two, it makes sense, we have three, it makes sense, even if we have four, I think it makes sense to do it right before the May board meeting. That leaves another night for all of you. We would start scheduling them, you know, like five o'clock or four-thirty, whenever you want, we run about twenty-minute interviews. Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Everybody good with that?
Unless you find that there's, like you said, five or six.
If there's a bunch more, then I think, well, just, I'll reach out to all of you and say, is there a special night that we could have Jennifer reach out? And if there's a night, we could have a special board meeting to do the interviews, okay? That's on, okay?
Yep.
Alright, that ends my superintendent report.
Okay.
Perfect. Questions for me?
Don't, don't leave right now, okay? If you're going right into discussion, I am telling you, back in like reopening for an update.
Now, this is supposed to be a discussion I'm liking before, so I'm gonna read a bunch of things, but if you have questions along the way, please interrupt me and answer those questions as they come up for you. Just again, highlighting to you and to our public about, we're around with our reopening plans for the final quarter of the school year. We continue to have great success. We talked about the fact that as a board, you made a decision to get our kids back into school second semester, and we have seen nothing but great success since, so thank you for that courage and that willingness to get our kids back into school. It has been well received by everyone. Students in K-5 have been in for almost four consecutive months, which has been great. We've had some small quarantines, but continued to work through that. Our secondary students have been in person five days a week, with limited amount of quarantine. We continue to have some quarantines, I think you probably have all seen in the news or have read. There is a slight spike occurring right now with students and younger students. We're seeing that a little bit here as well. A real thank you to everyone involved, parents, everyone, I know I said this a couple times, but please understand, parents, that when our nurses call, or health aides call, or our office staff calls, we don't want anybody quarantined, but we have to quarantine students, and we'll continue to have to quarantine students possibly, so please be patient with that and understanding of that. Parents have really been there, so thank you. I continue, our COVID dashboard looks fine, in fact, last week, we're very proud of the fact that we not have any staff absences due to COVID last Friday. So, woo, first day ever. And again, we've been really good, we've been lucky, it's only been very limited, two or three staff doubles a day. Today, we had a little bit of a spike, I think we had five, but typically, it's been two or three or not, and so that's great. A couple of weeks ago, we were averaging about thirty students in quarantine a day. And like I said, we're a little bit of a spike. The last four days, we've been averaging just over a hundred and ten students in quarantine. And a real spike at, no fault by anybody, a real spike at both at our middle school and our high school. You know, again, thanks to Jamie, ever back in this work on our dashboard. Some of you might have noticed that our dashboard slightly changed, and wondering like, where is that burden rate number? I'll let Jamie speak to that a little bit more eloquently than I can. But that really is a result of Brown County not providing that data anymore, and that's why we've gone away from that number. So, it wasn't like we just took it away, Brown County's not providing that number anymore, and Jamie, go ahead, you can speak for it.
Yeah, sure, so it was maybe two weeks ago, Brown County just kind of put a disclaimer on their site saying, "We're working on something, it's, technical difficulties will follow up." And then, after a week of that, they came back and said, they made the decision to no longer have a Brown County dashboard because of all the duplicate dashboards that were out there. And so, they pushed residents to look at either the DHS website or the CDC website. At that point, Kurt and I talked, and with the CDC having their new updated guidance, we thought it made most sense to just report that, but we didn't wanna confuse anybody by changing the front of the dashboard, because it's a different metric, it's a seven-day metric as far as the case rate. It's also a positive, positive rate per test, not per person, so that rate's gonna look a little different. So, we didn't wanna put new metrics on the dashboard and confuse people, so we just kind of linked to it on page two. And as I said last board meeting, there is a part of that CDC guidance that basically says, "If you are an open school, and you will have, you are mitigating and you have low cases of transmission in your school, stay open." And so, so that's, so I think it's really important that we continue to monitor our local dashboard data, like we have with those checkmarks, and then have page two to keep an eye on what's happening in the county, as Kurt said, it's been a slight increase, which you can see, but our local numbers have been pretty good. So, that's, that is the why. It's too bad, 'cause there's some local hospital data that's really hard to get now, that I wish that we're missing now on the Brown County dashboard, so I'll be curious if that comes back or not, but, but that's just kind of where it's at, yeah.
So, again, thank you, Jamie, for all this tremendous work with that. Other questions, gentlemen? Like we talked about before the board meeting, just in general conversation, both of our staff have received both vaccines, or have had at least their first COVID, but really feel like anybody who wants to be vaccinated on our staff, will have that opportunity, and will be vaccinated by the end of April, so... Really feel like we're in a good place, you know, if we had to give a number, we're not tracking that, but if we had to give a number, we feel pretty confident, say it's right around between eight-five and ninety percent of our staff have some vaccines. However, August looks great, but you guys keep laughing at me, but I keep saying, we're not out of the woods yet. So, we still need to continue to stay vigilant in our work, in our safety procedures and practice the three W's. Wash your hands, watch your distance, and wear your masks. And so, we will continue to do that to the rest of the school year. Providing opportunities for kids to have mask breaks, where we will continue to wear our mask breaks. In August, all of you approved our reopening plan, which, part of that big part of our reopening plan was using masks as a mitigation strategy, and so we are continuing to follow your lead, approving that in our board policy, and we get to mask, and we continue with our professors. Plan is to wear them in summer school as well. We are limiting field trips for the remainder of the year to trips that are enclosed within school boundaries. And so, what that means is, like, we allow our fifth graders to go from Pioneer to Valley View over for the Subwater enactment. We're allowing some of our transition field trips that we have. For example, our fifth graders, some of our fifth graders go over and transition to Parkview. Some of our Parkview students transition and have a day, or spend a half a day over to high school. Again, we'll provide those opportunities. We're also gonna provide, including NWTC in that boundary, 'cause we have quite a few of our high school students who either go to those for classes, or we have opportunities for our high school students involved with activities at NWTC. So, we're allowing, including NWTC in our school boundaries. We talked about it before, but again, excited that we're having high school graduation on Sunday, June thirteenth. Again, as we mentioned before, we are planning an outdoor graduation, we're excited about that. We will let parents know, and all of you know, if that plan changes, you know, by Wednesday, I think we said, Mr. Ribbons?
Yep, the last one.
And make a decision on whether we're gonna stick with Sunday, or if we're going to go with the indoor versus outdoor. We also are providing, we think, a really nice night in honor of our senior class on Friday, May twenty-first. It's kind of a combination of prom that they did get last year, senior night, but without the dance. It'd be students only, no parents, a dinner, a show, there's a lot of different activities going to be provided. Some of the post-prom gifts that we would have normally given out at prom the before, we planned to hand those out, is that correct? So...
Where's it being held?
Yep.
Where's it being held? So, there, can I, I mean, I, well, it'll actually be at the community center.
Oh, it's community center.
Yeah, I mean, I could speak to it if you want. The, they're doing it at the community center. We're having food trucks come, so the kids, there'll be two food trucks, the kids can eat whatever they want. We are having like water and Gatorades, so they're all self-contained. We're having Cupcake Couture, who is an alumni, is gonna do the cupcakes, and they're doing individually packaged cupcakes, so it's completely safe. And then, we're having like community hypnotists come to do, so the kids can have like a show, we'll have slide shows. We're taking the post-prom, the raffles that would have been done at post-prom that they didn't get to do, along with additional parent donations, doing some really neat raffle prizes for the kids, so they're gonna get some cool raffle stuff. And I feel like I'm forgetting another big thing. They're still gonna do gag awards, correct, and like senior award, gag awards?
Senior awards, gag awards, and the presentation of the teacher of the year. Some of those, some of the things that traditionally happen at the senior night as well.
So, just kind of, I think, turning up senior night a little bit more, and there will, there will be a few parents there, because we need some parent volunteers, but it'll be a very small handful of parents, 'cause the community center, we have to actually clean up and throw the tables away and all that kind of stuff, so we'll need some volunteers, but it won't be. So, I think it'll be a nice night, I mean, I'm excited, we've got some cute table decorations. Courtney, Percy, of Mr. Ribbons, making us some cute stuff to put on the tables, and so, it's gonna be really nice.
Together.
I know.
Wow. I couldn't resist, Mr. Ribbons, sorry.
So, hopefully, it'll be nice and it's very reasonable, it's like twenty dollars a person. So, it'll be very reasonable, and so hopefully, it'll be nice. And a different special thing for this class. It doesn't replace prom, but it's, I think, gonna be neat.
Last month, I talked about the importance of us, and we continue to have this conversation administratively, about moving from surviving to thriving. And as a district team, we have been extremely busy planning for the remainder of the school year, the summer, and next fall, in finding ways to close that achievement gap. You know, I don't want people to say it's a lost year, 'cause that's unfair, it's unfair to our students, it's unfair to our staff to say that, but we are going to certainly work hard to make sure that we close those achievement gaps. So, we are wrapping up to ramp up to support our students. Keith and I sent you a document that we shared with our staff last week on the elementary and secondary school emergency relief plan, ESR, that will be spent over the next couple of years. And we really are proud of our plan. Each school board has to approve that plan, so at some point, I will bring you back to approve that plan. And then, that will have to be submitted to the DPI, to the federal government, on how we're spending these dollars. Any question on that document that we sent you, guys? So, hopefully, it was pretty well detailed and kind of got an idea of... So, phase one is right now till the end of the school year. I know teachers are tired, I know that the kids are tired, but I'm just, I have to say publicly, I'm overwhelmingly impressed with our staff's willingness, even at this time of year, and considering the year we've had, to stay extra nights after school, to now, in the end of the school year, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, to provide additional support to kids who need that extra support. And so, Keith and I were thinking, maybe we'd get a couple teachers. It's been overwhelmingly how many teachers are willing to spend the night, to spend an extra night, hour each night, hour and a half each night to help support students. So, we're really impressed with that.
Are you beginning to ask students to shop?
Well, we put out lots of feelers, we, we made lots of phone calls and asked parents. I think right now, as of last week, now again, we were just new into it. Now, we are starting as early as next week, so we're pretty excited about it. I think, between the two elementary schools, I think we're well over a hundred students, so we're excited about that. So we're excited about that. And again, at the middle school, I think they're gonna have about twenty-five or thirty students, so.
I think more than that at the middle school, because I talked with Kenny today. Couple of alternate groups. Some are preschool focused, some are some other study skill type focuses. So I think we're gonna have probably more than that at the middle school. I was pretty happy with the number.
Just a really good point, Keith, a question. So know that we're not, oh, it's Chris trying to sum it up again.
Yeah, we're gonna have about fifty to fifty-five students.
Perfect, thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
And so, to credit to Chris and others, we're not just, it's not just a focus on the academic piece, that's a part of it. Chris and her team and all the teams are also providing, like, kids just kind of hinted to, that we're providing some of that social-emotional, and some of that guidance as well. So there's more to this than just the academic side of it. We're also providing some additional support for kids on the social-emotional side as well, okay?
And maybe just a kudos to, to some of the parents out there, because there's some parents that are even trying to rearrange schedules. But I know that there are some teachers that were very pleasantly surprised that every student that they invited to this, parents are saying, yes, yes, yes. And so students that, you know, parents may have to rearrange a schedule to get them later, or to make sure they're getting home, but, you know, all those kinds of things are also behind this. So that's, I mean, obviously, huge kudos to the teachers who are willing to do this. But also, I think, parents are being supportive, which is really great to see, too.
And I think it's important we're offering busing for any students within the district that we can, just to remove those barriers, because the students in need at most might be the most challenging for them to stay around if they didn't have busing. So it's really been all the way around, an effort to try and help those students in need.
And food.
And food, yeah. We're gonna do snack and dinner, so they'll get food right before they start, and then have something they take home for dinner that night. Very nice.
So again, as you can see, a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of planning. I brought this up at, you know, a couple of meetings I'm at, and people are like, what? You already have all that planned? And that's just a real credit to our team and the amount of work and to our staff. And two, as Jenny mentioned, the parents are being cooperative and are requesting this happen. Phase two is summer of twenty-twenty-one. So this summer, we're gonna offer our normal summer school, which is gonna start, I think, I think it's June, what? June fourteenth, and it's gonna go until July ninth. That registration has already started. A great effort by Andy Baye and Dukrichat and Manny Schrader. There's an online registration now, and so they can, parents can go ahead and sign it up. And I think, Andy wanted me to mention tonight that the classes are filling up really fast. So parents, if you are interested in signing up for summer school, please register soon. Registration, like I said, started on Monday, and then by today, Manny said that classes are really filling up really quickly. So we're excited about that as well. And then finally, phase three is this fall of twenty-twenty and beyond. We have posted some positions already. We have taken an approach of trying to provide additional support for our students. We're taking some of our very talented teachers who are in classroom positions now, and putting them as interventionists. And then we're gonna be hiring some teachers to replace them in the classroom. And again, a real credit to our administrative team, to our teachers who have stepped up, who have been asked to fill those roles. And we're very excited about those opportunities for our students, so.
How long are those positions for?
Right now, we feel pretty good. Keith and I have been looking at the close, we had a DPI meeting today, talking about ESER three, and kind of planning out exactly what that is. We're gonna have to, obviously, report out to, to all of you, and to our state of how we spent that money. We feel really good that we'll be, the ESER funding that's been promised or been approved, and the allocation that looks like it's coming to us. We feel really good that we'll be able to offer that for at least two years, but a real good possibility could be three years.
But it's also something I think that will have to be evaluated. And the structure may change in the second year or the third year, depending what's effective and what's not, what the student needs, we see, so it's pretty dynamic. One thing, Kurt, that you kind of quickly skipped over was phase two of the summer. We're gonna do regular summer school, and then we're gonna do a program after summer. And I think that's important, that that'll be more focused on certain areas, and more of that similar to the after-school program, where certain kids will be invited, or they'll be requested to attend, so we can get that focus and small group work on certain skills. The whole goal with the ESER funds is to help the learning loss that's happened in the last year, help catch those kids back up and bring them in. So it's very targeted. Our summer school is the normal summer school with exploratory courses and some of those fun things, and some academic things, but this will be very targeted. And we have staff, once again, that stepped up and were willing to put in the extra time. So we're looking at what we can do. We haven't fully defined what we're gonna do in that summer program. We have a reading program that we've had in the past, we were talking about expanding that and doing some math in there. That's more elementary. We think we're gonna look at other options, see what else we need, what else we can do, when we get staff, new kids in. For, obviously, getting high school kids in summer, it would be a challenge. So I'm not sure that we'll, you know, do much, it's just like the after-school program, getting them to stay late would be a challenge. And that's why we looked at for phase three, doing it during the school day, about a half.
Thank you. Any questions for me?
All right, let's move on to our action items. Extended contracts.
Okay, I'll take that one. Every year, the board approves extended contracts, and it's something that is, that I'm not sure if we need to do, but I think it's good for you to see here, see what we're doing, and know where we are. So what these are certain roles that we have, need additional days during the summer to complete. So the best example I can give you is the high school counselors. They're working on schedule changes and getting that schedule. And if you've never done a high school schedule, it is one of the most complicated exercises you'll ever go through, trying to get every kid their request, and you never can, but as close as you can, and even on class sizes, so you don't have forty in one section and twenty in another, do all those things. So we have ten days, for example, on our high school counselors. Five of those days, we give them trade-off days, meaning they'll take a day off during the school year, and work during the summer. The other five, we pay them extra, because we don't want to have all our high school counselors out for ten days during the school year, just that loss during the school year is too great. So the other ones, you'll see, they're the only ones who get trade-off days. We've got the school nurses, because they have to set up health programs for students who have medical needs, and all those, get all this stuff set up, so when the school year starts, we're ready for those students who have medical needs. We've got the counselors at the middle school as well to finalize that schedule. And let me just tell you, between both the high school counselors, middle school counselors, and administration hopefully, this has been the most challenging scheduling year for both of them that I think we've ever had. And then we were talking before the meeting about open enrollment numbers coming in a little above what I projected. So now I, to a wrench, if I give them a little more FDE to work with, which is a good thing, I think they're happy about it, but it kind of threw their whole schedule back into, let's reshuffle this deck and figure out where we're going. So I think we may not even have enough days in here for these counselors to work through what needs to get done during the summer, because there's a lot of changes going on. And we have this many open enrollment kids at the middle and high school. Schedules have to be set up for those students, and that's gonna be a challenge. So they do that. We've got the library media specialist at the high school has a couple of days in there. We may need more days there as well with the library media specialists across the district, as we have all the one-to-one machines that are out for virtual students. We've got to collect those back in, and get that all taken care of, and make sure we've got what we need. So that check-in may take a little time. I know we've talked about starting that a little early, but we also don't want to take learning days away from kids. So we're not gonna start that too early, and we're trying to balance that. So we may need more days there yet as well. And then the marketing and business area at the high school, because they do some internship type work, where they're working with businesses, so they have a day as well that we pay. So basically, what we see here is what we've had in years past. And I'm giving you that with the caveat that we may still need more, depending on how things go. This has been a very unusual year, that's created some interesting challenges for all of the staff involved.
And I'll just reiterate, but we've done this every year. So can we get a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve extended contracts, have a presenter.
I'll second.
And motion to second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, Bert Barnes, superintendent communications. I did receive one phone call from a grandparent. And just left a very nice voicemail, I followed up with a conversation with this individual. I'm just very thankful to all of you, and thankful to our team, our administrative team, for the great work of leading during such a challenging year. And so thank you for your work, on behalf of this grandmother you called, and thanking our administrative team as well, and teachers and students and everyone.
All right. Future board meetings, the topics, the next regularly scheduled board meeting will be held Wednesday, May twelfth, here at the district office at six-thirty. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, everyone.